15, if you would please silence any cellphone devices you have on you as a courtesy. We will ask for approval of the minutes. Anybody have any comments, recommendations, motion?
I move to approve the June 21st meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry, approve the meeting. We will now open it up to citizen communication. Anybody wishing to address the City Planning Commission, if you would go to the podium, state your name and address?
Just for items that aren't on the agenda.
Oh, okay. I'll get this. All right, never mind. We will have our developmental review.
Good afternoon. The first item on the agenda is we have a variance request from the Texan, which is located at 7305 North Main Street. They are requesting a variance to the permanent signs and on-premise signs. It is section 5-149A1, little a, 2. What this section limits is how big a store can have their on-premise freestanding signs. Based on the code, they are allowed one square foot of square footage per linear frontage of the road, or the less, which would be 500 square feet max. Currently, the Texan would like to place two permanent freestanding signs, one along the frontage road of Zach Lunt's Parkway and the other along North Main Street. The combination of both signs for square footage is going to be 653 square feet total.
What did you say, 653 or 635?
653. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, 635.5 square feet total. They are also proposing to add two billboards onto the property as well, which each billboard is allowed 400 square feet of maximum square footage. So what they are asking for is for you to allow them the extra square footage to have both signs be erected on there. But once again, we like to stress that even the billboard signs have a 400 square feet. So we're looking at total signage footage. If they have all their signage allowed, would be almost 1,400 square feet of signage. Staff is recommending the denial of the variance requests for the additional square footage to the on-premises sign. The current sign ordinance was adopted in August of 2014, with the maximum square footage for one property was established by the community at that time, and no variance have been granted since the passing of that sign ordinance. Any questions?
I have one. Was this issue addressed during the design phase, when they came in for plans to be evaluated and so forth?
No.
So the sign issue was never brought up at that time?
No, and typically, we receive the sign applications after the development is pretty substantially far along, so the...
I guess I'm confused. So sign applications are separate from the actual overall building design and layout of the property and so forth?
Yes, generally, they are.
Okay. There's no height issue involved in this?
No, both signs proposed are within the height requirements. The freestanding sign on Zach Lunt's Parkway is at the 50-foot maximum for Main Street. The height would be 35 feet. They're actually proposing a 30-foot-high sign for Main Street. So the issue is not their height, it's the total square footage of all signs combined.
Okay. I guess, I'm assuming the developer is here, so I will ask, I guess he's the more appropriate individual to ask the other question.
Thank you. Would you all like to address, if you would state your name and address, please?
Mark Pollen, I'm with Compadre Sign &amp; Design, 779 Timberland Drive, Victoria, Texas, 77905. Okay, the sign and the billboards are completely different issues going on here. If we, if you all can see the drawing here, the reason we want the additional square footage on the Main Street side, the, well, let's stress the high-rise first. The high-rise, there's a 30-foot overpass right there. The sign is 50-foot. We have approximately 400 square feet in the high-rise sign. The LED price signs are 42 inches, so the visibility on that is necessary to see it from before and after. There's an exit just on the riverside of the loop that will curl around on the access road to allow it to get to the entrance on to the, at the store there. On the Main Street side, there's going to be two entrances, one closer to the red light, one further back towards West High School. The one that's closer to the red light will have a median put in, Tex dot's going to put a median there. If you come out of that first exit, you must go onto the loop. You cannot go onto Main Street. Therefore, the only exit you can get onto Main Street to go north would be the one that's on the further north side. The traffic at that, at that location is pretty heavy during the school year, mornings and afternoons especially. So, traffic coming north on 87, we want visibility for the sign for the simple reason, we want them to turn onto the Zach Lunt's Parkway access road to come in that exit, because many times, the traffic is backed up all the way from the red light to West High School, so crossing that, crossing that traffic right there is going to pose a problem and a traffic hazard. Another thing is, there's a diesel canopy on this location for big trucks. On the north side of Victoria, there's no other spot for trucks to get fuel, other than somewhere on Crossing Way out at Nursery. All the truck stops and everything out on the loop on the other side. So to get 18-wheelers in there, we want them also to use the Zach Lunt's entrance and exit to come out of there. We do not want, and neither does the city, want tractor-trailers coming across that traffic right there onto Main Street, because that, again, is a hazard. So if we go with the eight-foot system that we're proposing on the, the switch, Shell system, Shell has different systems, what they have an eight-foot, six-foot, and different things. So what that does, the eight-foot system does, is it gives us 30-inch LED price signs. Visibility, maximum visibility is around 1,200 square feet, 950 to 1,000 square feet, to where, on the northbound traffic at the red light there, it's around that, where they can start seeing the sign. There were some pictures in the package there. Apologize for the rain, but that was when we were in our little monsoon season, so that's where we have them, so. But anyway, what, we want them to see that sign to, for directional, to, once they get underneath the high, the overpass, to be able to turn onto Zach Lunt's, so we can kind of prevent some of the traffic issues on that north entrance there. If you go to the smaller sign, it drops the LEDs, they only come in certain sizes. You can't custom-make the LED letters, either 18, or 24s, 30s. So if it drops the LEDs down to 18-inch, well, that significantly decreases the visibility of that part. And I know I'm using that as one, one item on the sign, because that's what people see most. You know, there is, in the package, I put a study that, you know, 88% of people use price as their decision to stop at a store. And so that's something that, if they're going to exit, and that's the only fuel, other than the stripes that's across the railroad tracks over there, and that one's difficult to get to, that's the last fuel until they get to Nursery. So if they decide it, coming north, they want to get over there, or even south, they have to merge across that traffic from the school traffic to be able to get into that first entrance, then we want them to be able to see the sign in plenty, a distance, so they can make that decision and not try to, you know, drivers are going to be drivers, and they're going to do things at the last minute, and so we want to try to prevent some of that. It's, you know, it's unique traffic flow here, because you have the 70 mile an hour traffic on the Zach Lunt's Parkway, but then you have the 50 to 55, or stop, depending on where the red light is. So there's two distinct different traffic patterns. We can't achieve the proper signage with one type, one size, or one sign here. A location similar to this is out at the old quarter station, or the corner of 59 and South Laurent. There's a Stripes, I think there, now McDonald's, different things. There's 980 square feet there, they have 801 square feet of signs there, for the simple reason they have a very similar high-rise. They got a McDonald's sign on top and the Stripes on, I think it's Citgo on top of that one. Well, then also on the corner, that's for the loop, for the 59 traffic. On the South Laurent traffic, there's another small virgin, it's 148 square feet. That's to catch the traffic on South 59, I mean, 185 going back and forth to Bloomington and stuff. And so it's a very similar location, where you have two completely different traffic patterns, two completely different traffic speeds, and that's why I think it's beneficial for us on this corner, to be able to get a little bit larger sign on the Main Street side for visibility. So, any questions?
Yeah?
Yes, now?
Yes.
Okay. Were the signs pre-bought? Were the signs, have they been manufactured yet?
The high-rise sign is coming here tomorrow, and the Shell keeps a inventory of signage for, because the smaller sign that's on the Main Street side is just basically a typical eight-foot system. All they do is change faces for different store names, locations, different things like that. The one on Main Street side is custom, custom-made for this location, so.
So, so if we deny this variance, what's going to happen to that sign?
It'll have to be used at another location.
Okay. Now, this Texan store, I think there's others around. Is this a standard sign used at other stores?
Inquero, there's, if you've seen the one Inquero there, there's two identical signs on each corner there, on each street, exact same signs as you, that we're proposing here for this Main Street side.
Okay. And then, during the design phase, were you contacted at all? At some point, somebody must have known that this might have been an issue, I guess, at some point in the design, before it's gotten to this point.
Well, the, the signed package, packages were ordered very early in the process. I'm the installer of the signs, we don't order the signs ourselves, they come from the, the fuel distributor. And so, we're the installer of everything. We didn't, we weren't aware that, we couldn't put that sign up until after the process had been in motion, and so.
I'm ready to deliberate. I'm ready for us to deliberate. It's still a public hearing, so we need to make sure that, if there's any others in the audience that would like to address the question.
Anybody else have any comments they'd like to address?
Anybody? Mr. New, you have anything?
No, I just might say that more sign, that's not something they turn, it's kind of one-off deal for sure. It's a, 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 it's
Which is exactly why we have the variance process.
So we're treating the business signs as a separate issue from the billboard signs? Or is this all in the maximum square footage signage allowed?
Billboards are actually, they would be in compliance as long as they are this appropriate distance from the freestanding signs. It was just additional information for the commission to know.
I have to say, I have been a little bit concerned about the traffic flow there because I have seen it in the morning and in the evenings when the kids are off and it does back up. So having something that might make that flow a little bit better is really not a bad idea.
Yeah, that intersection is the highest traffic count in town.
It is.
Yeah.
It's terrible. We go out to nursery to feed every other morning and coming back in there, if you get there anytime after about 7:10, you are in serious issues.
Right.
And the afternoons also.
If I remember during this, the development of the sign ordinance, I know a lot of sign manufacturers were consulted. And I know, as stated here, there hasn't been one granted since then. I do recall denying a variance request on Zachlin's Parkway some years ago.
It was for a height, though.
Yes.
They wanted the higher, the higher sign, yeah. I mean, I agree that, I think this is kind of a unique circumstance. I know that corner is kind of a unique circumstance. I mean, lord knows it's been sitting there for years with nothing but a lonely little old ram running around.
Seems like we have a practical conflict between a rule that we'd all like to see preserved in sign appearance and size and so forth, and the practical problem of the driver from their perspective and not trying to create another type of situation that's a consequence of our trying to be consistent with our rules.
Well, that being said, why 500? Why not 1,000? Why not 2,000? That 500 was chosen for some reason.
Well, but then that decision is also up to us when they request a variance, when situations occur. So that's why we're here.
And it wasn't an issue with the 50 feet overall height on the, the height's not the issue anywhere here, right?
No.
Just the square footage.
Anything else? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I move we approve the variance.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, opposed.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. The next developmental review.
Our next variance request is at, located at 507 North Vine Street. I like to remind the commissioners, the city of Victoria does not have zoning. That is not the issue we're presenting here. We have Peaches and Tortilla Boutique who would like to open up a retail boutique in the accessory structure behind the main house of 507. It was originally approved by the city as a poolhouse. The owner did correct us that it hasn't been used as a poolhouse over a decade, but it's still an accessory structure to that primary 507. Being that they are wanting to open up a commercial business within this accessory structure, though we don't have zoning, we do have codes and regulations that these commercial businesses must abide by. The variance being requested by Peaches and Tortilla's boutique is for Section 21-92, the off-street parking requirement. Currently, the property location only has the two residential parking spots, which is located next to the accessory structure and right behind the primary structure. Being that it is going to be a proposed commercial retail spot, now making this lot a mixed-use lot, we would be, the city by code and ordinance would be requiring a total of five spots because each use being used on the property must have substantial parking for each use. The residential property would be required to still maintain their two residential spots. The new commercial business, which is being proposed, is based off the square footage. It would be one parking spot per 350 square feet, which would require an additional three parking spots, one being dedicated to handicap parking for a total parking being required for this particular mixed-use lot of five off-street parking. The city is aware that in the past, this particular accessory structure has held a commercial business, but has also been dealt with as far as code violations for this past businesses, which that business eventually had to move out of this spot into a bigger location that could support its clientele as well as its parking situation based on code enforcement violations from the past. Staff is recommending the denial of this approval for the variance of the off-street parking based on the past code violations we've had with it and making it substantial use to not, to be a problem area again and kind of keep it maintained. Any questions?
I don't have any.
So the previous business moved due to code violation enforcement or because they
It was more of the code issue of being told they needed to fix this because it wasn't an approved commercial business by the city.
So they just did it without?
It started out as a home-based business and grew to a point that we did have complaints and our code enforcement, or actually Rick Madrid, our building official, spoke with them on various occasions about the size and scale because it had really grown beyond a home-based business. And so I'm not sure what actually, I don't want to speculate on what prompted them to move. It might have been because their business was successful enough that they did need a larger space, or it could have been because of the code enforcement actions. That would be pure speculation on our part.
It's not the same people, is it?
No, sir. It's a different owner.
And if you're looking at your screen, the proposed location is the lighter blue building as the accessory structure there. The accessory structure would still need some work to make it, bring it up to commercial standards as well.
How is it short in commercial standards?
It did have a couple of electrical issues that needed to be brought up to commercial and I believe one plumbing issue.
Is it feasible to turn that front area into parking or is that not allowed?
It would have to be brought by a site plan for us to review to make sure the spots are adequate in size with the turning radius.
So it may be an option.
Yeah, we would have to see it in the site plan just to make sure it could be done.
The three parking spots required for the commercial use would be required to follow the commercial parking lot standards with your drive aisles and things like that. I do believe that there is enough square footage there, but the current configuration may need to be tweaked. The two spaces for the proposed, or for the existing residential use could be your traditional, you know, back end, you know, or double tandem sort of driveway located anywhere on the lot. It is a corner lot with enough frontage to actually have two driveways.
Okay.
I have another question. On the five factors for granting the variance?
I'm sorry?
The five factors, the criteria established for granting variances. I was just curious, maybe I'm just confused. It doesn't meet, it has to meet all of these. It's been such a long time since I've looked at these, correct? Which one doesn't it meet?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, that's okay. The five criteria established for granting variances. I was curious. So it doesn't meet any of these?
In staff's professional opinion. This also requires a public hearing?
Yeah, I was going to say if we could open it up to a public hearing now, anybody wanting to approach the planning commission, if you would step to the podium and state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Lucina Milner and my address is 507 North Vine Street. I want to thank you all for being here this evening. So I have a couple of things to talk to you guys about. My husband and I are not from Victoria, Texas, and we moved here three years ago. While purchasing this house, I had the city planner come out to my house to approve it to be a boutique. When we first pulled this house up on the map and Katie, I was like, oh my gosh, this is perfect. I love historical homes and I can open up my dream boutique. So we came here on a Saturday and I walked into the blue house and there was the previous owners and she had a business there, right? And so anyways, I ended up calling the city and the planner at the time came out and he said, you know, you will not be able to sell any food out of here because you will need one parking, you'll need one parking spot for every three seats, but I will go ahead and grandfather in it being a small boutique. I will be using about 500 to 600 square foot of this building. It will just be a little, small, high-end boutique nestled into the downtown area. And if I have as many cars as that, the dance studio up the street ever had, you better believe I will not be in that blue house anymore. I will have been very successful and moved along, right? And I have a couple of problems with why the city has denied my variance. It is okay for the dance studio that is half a block up the street. That is a much larger operation with a lot more people coming in and out of there to have this variance. But since we've just purchased this house a couple or few years ago, I'm not allowed to because I'm not from here and my grandma didn't own it when I was, you know, 50 years ago or whatever it be. I don't think that that's right. We're trying to provide tax revenue for this town. We're trying to provide local residential shopping where people don't drive to Sugarland and they can shop here in town. We love our neighborhood. We love our neighbors. I would never do anything disrespectful, signage, anything like that to ruin the historical district. When we first moved here, we were on the historical home tour and we had only lived in the house a few months and I, we opened our, oops, sorry, sorry. We opened our doors to the city and also tried to help the preservation organization raise funds for our homes. I also would like to talk about how I do think it's unequal treatment and we still have not got an explanation of why the dance studio and many other businesses in the downtown area can have variance on parking. My boutique will not be open during the time when the dance studio has high traffic. The kiddos usually get picked up, you know, after 5:00 and we will have already been closed by then. I will not be open on Sundays. I won't be open on Mondays. And so I really don't think it's a nuisance. I would never want to be a nuisance to this town. I try to do a lot of charitable work here by being on multiple organizations and going to many different things in this city. And so I know I have a lot of support from my neighbors, from the Taylors to the Hatleys, from the Williams, Bethoons, Bells, the Burgess, the Burrises, the Rogers, the Canigs. The list can go on and on of who supports and wants to shop at this boutique. Before this, while my husband and I owned this property, we had a yoga studio there. It is now moved to downtown above the Chinese restaurant because they outgrew the studio. And even with having 12 to 20 people in a class while my husband and I have owned this property, there was not one complaint about parking. I will never have 12 to 20 people inside of my boutique. At least I don't, I don't foresee that. And if I do, like I said, I'll move. So I also wanted to address that it hasn't been a poolhouse like earlier they had discussed in over a decade. And I think when the O'Connors bought it, they were using it as a rental property. So for a little while, it wasn't a business. That would make sense. But when the O'Connors owned it, before they used it as a rental property, it was an art studio for them. And so, and then the next people that purchased it had swim, bike, run. We did not own the property when it was swim, bike, run. And I don't even know what complaints they have got. I had not seen any parking complaints. From my understanding through the neighborhood, it was a sign issue. And there could have been other issues, but I'm not positive because I've not seen that proof. And so I think that's all I have to say. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Yes, I've got one. You just mentioned a while ago yoga classes.
Yes, sir.
Was that during the time that you owned the property?
Yes, sir. So there, I think there's, there's something about it, an in-house business, which a lot of people have. But I, since I won't, I originally didn't want it to be like appointment only. And so they're saying that it's not an in-house business if it's not by appointments. I believe that's what the city is saying.
And you had how many people there doing yoga?
12 to 20.
And where were all the vehicles?
In the street or they walked from the neighborhood. They parked or walked.
And where are the complaints?
We didn't have any, sir.
The dance studio is not operating under variance, are they? They've been there for 40 plus years?
They've been there since 1939 continually in operation.
So they're considered grandfather, the dance studio?
Legally non-conforming, yes. If they were to do anything that, you know, build an addition or something like that, they would be required, but they've had very, very, very little changes.
The code enforcement wouldn't be able to enforce anything on the dance studio?
No, sir.
And I'm not, I don't want to throw the dance studio under the bus. That is not my reason for talking about that by any means. I support local businesses, small businesses, and I think amenities in this town are nice. Before Blooming Flowers Yoga showed up, we did not have anything like that in the downtown area and we have a lot of new yogis now in Victoria. We have a lot of young couples moving into downtown that would love to be able to walk up the street and get their little girl an outfit or a bib if they would like without having to drive all the way across the city or to a completely different city.
All righty, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything to say if they want to approach the podium? State your name and address.
Torn Bells, 106 South William Street. I would like to say that I would love to have the business downtown. I mean, we're, we're trying to increase the charm of downtown Victoria and it's hard sometimes to get people to embrace the idea of opening a business, period. But to embrace and operate a business downtown, I think is wonderful. So I think the parking would be very limited. I think that boutique like what she's talking about might have one or two cars at a time on the street, which I don't think, to me, seems like a big deal. And to make them incur the expense of putting additional parking on their property, I think would not be a fair thing to do. So I think it would be a good thing and I would be all for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say? Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Byron Cumberland. I live at 1807 East Warren. I own property on Staden Street, 401 West Staden and 403 West Staden, which is a half a block from this house and directly across the street from the dance studio. And traffic there is a mess at a lot of different times. Parking is a problem. We have people parking in front of the driveway so where we can't get out. I understand that the dance studio is grandfathered and we can't do anything about that, but I don't think that we should add additional traffic to the problem. So I'm opposed to any kind of a commercial venture in that neighborhood. Number one, Vine Street is a fairly narrow street. You know, if you get cars parking on both sides, you can't have two-way traffic. It's, it kind of limits it then to a, to a one-way street. So I say that kind of a business would increase the traffic on Staden Street getting to it because that's the most direct route from Moody to get to a business. And I'm saying it just, it would add to the congestion that the dance studio is putting in that neighborhood. On a side note, you know, I'm a business owner in Victoria. I've had, I had a property on Red River. It didn't have adequate parking per the city. So I bought the lot next door. I moved the house and put in adequate parking. Had another business, same thing. I didn't have enough parking for the customers, so I tore down a building and built a car parking lot. You know, to me, that's the way business is. People who want business spend money to make their business operate. So anyway, I oppose it because I think that it's going to add congestion to, to the neighborhood.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
I have one question. We received a letter over here that was listed some objections to this. Are you the author of this letter?
I didn't write a letter, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to approach and speak? Your name and address, please?
Matt Simmons, 507 North Vine Street. So I'll just kind of give you a, just a rough reason, you know, we've essentially bought this house three years ago with the idea of opening a business there. So it was always my wife's dream and that's, you know, essentially a big reason why we bought that house. And at the same time, we were told, you know, we did things the right way to try to find out if this could be a business, all the above. And we were told yes before we made this massive investment for, you know, our personal situation. A lot of times the, the dance studio gets brought up into this. I mean, I understand as far as traffic on Vine or whatnot, I mean, nobody would know that better than, than us. We sit at that corner. So I will say that I don't think there's been one time, I come home at, you know, 5:00 almost every day, 5:00 to 6:00, and there's definitely traffic on, right in front of the dance studio that wraps around onto Staden. Not once has there ever been a car associated with the dance studio in front of our house on the other side of the street as far as in front of the eventual business. I would say the, the options of adding parking, we're not going to tear down historical homes next to us. We're not going to tear down a fence that was, you know, built a long time ago. We're not going to be doing any of that. I think that ruins the, just the overall state of downtown, the look of it, all the above. And, you know, just last thing is, we look at this as kind of a stepping stone. It's not, our, our goal is to be in downtown Victoria, in the main street, kind of, kind of a place to attract visitors, tourists, all the above. But, so, so this is a stepping stone if it takes off for us, which I'm confident I will, it will. I mean, my wife's a very, very determined, successful person, but she's also one of the most caring people. So she, she cares about this city. She cares about downtown and I just ask that you consider accepting our variance.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for?
I've got one. Who told you that you could grandfather this property in as a business?
It was a city, was it the city, the city planner that we had visit the house?
You have a name?
Jerry.
Jared, Jared Mayfield, maybe, Jared, or someone else.
Remember Jared?
No.
It doesn't matter, does it?
But it wasn't in writing, it was just?
Yeah, you know.
Was it?
Jared or Jared, it, it.
It could have been Jared, yeah, I forgot.
They wouldn't have had that authority. I mean, I don't have the authority to approve it either, so.
I'm just asking.
That's the point of the variance.
There's nothing in writing.
Y'all's perp.
Verification of some of the statements that are made.
Yep. Thank you.
And do y'all, do y'all get, I'm guessing you get access to this letter that was written by, by somebody anonymous? I mean, I was looking over it.
Yes, yes, we have a copy.
You have a copy?
Yes, sir.
And as, as, I don't know, as y'all are asking me for evidence of that, there's a lot of statements in this thing that, that we would almost kind of love to have evidence of. When you're talking about that, somebody stating that there's T-bone accidents at the intersection of Vine and Staden, I think that would cause quite a ruckus as far as police and, and things like that. And I've never encountered that. So it's, it's just.
It could have been priority or ownership of the home.
Yeah. It states in the past six months.
Oh, okay.
But I would just, a lot of these statements are very overwhelming and overblown, I think. But anyway.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody have anything else? We will close the public forum.
I have a comment.
Okay.
We approved a very similar variance for Trinity Episcopal Church and School. I don't see this as being much different. We did that about a year and a half ago, we, when we allowed some buildings to be put on their parking lot. And once again, I don't see this as being much different than that.
Feeling sincerely torn on this. I kind of came in here with one opinion and then was really thinking that Victoria is a growing community. I just read that our median age here has lowered in Victoria County and I think that Victoria could benefit from being more startup friendly so that folks do have a stepping stone and can move into larger businesses and whatnot. I think that if, maybe it's because I'm a young millennial professional, but I love the idea of places like this. I know that that will bring, you know, business to that area as a stepping stone. But then at the same time, I keep thinking that we, as wonderful as that sounds, we do need to hold paramount with our planning practices, safety and, you know, so if there have really been three T-bone accidents, you know, in the past six months, was there, you know, was a business in place when those things happened in this particular spot? It sounds like the yoga studio must have closed several months ago or relocated. So I'm not sure that that is necessarily relevant to the parking situation here. So then I'm not seeing a safety issue. Just telling you all my thoughts.
I would add a note to that about this letter. And I say this to my fellow commissioners and to the public as well. I think for someone to, to author a letter such as this, an objection, and not sign it and allege that there are other property owners that agree with them and they didn't sign it and they didn't show up, that's about equivalent to writing a nasty letter and sticking it under your door and ringing the doorbell and running. I would suggest that, that things like this are inappropriate. My name is right there on the front and like the rest of you, I'm charged with making a decision, whatever decision I make. And the people out here that have showed up, they've expressed their points of view, identified themselves, they showed up. This hasn't. I say this has little to no merit and doesn't even really belong here. And I think it's, I would, I'm critical of the person who pulled a stunt like this. I consider it to be a stunt.
Want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the variance.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all.
You're passionate about.
This, this is, this is garbage.
One of the last things, the monthly development report, this month, we've only had one minor plat for the Wada subdivision number one. Our monthly building permits, our numbers are still above last year and we're still showing good progress on those numbers. Any questions?
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation. Anybody have anything else?
I'd just like to remind the commissioners that we do need to know if you are interested in attending the state planning conference in October in Galveston this year. Early registration has opened. And then also to remind those of you that have not completed your Texas Open Meetings Act training to get those certificates to the city secretary's office.
How about any replacements for? How about any replacements for planning commissioners going off? Do we have any potentials?
Council, I believe, will be making that decision at the next council meeting. So, if you know anybody that's interested, please remind them to submit their application to the city secretary's office.
Awesome.
When are you outgoing? Is it next month?
I think I'm August, I'm term limits.
So, will we have new...
So, I want to go to the thing in October then.
I thought I was 2019, I guess, Mark.
We don't want you to leave for the record.
I know.
We'll have to check. But no, I don't, you're not coming off this month.
That's why I thought you were. Same as, same as duration, we have one, another year. No?
Alright, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.